I'd like to call the Monday, November 3rd, City of LaPorte Common Council meeting to order. We will begin with the pledge of allegiance. Councilwoman Julie West, lead the way.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call. Our Treasurer, Parthoon.
Councilwoman Kineszny.
Present.
Councilwoman Buchanan.
Here.
Councilwoman West.
Here.
Councilwoman Frankie is absent. Councilwoman Huffman is absent. Councilwoman Ficus.
Present.
Councilwoman Galloway.
Here.
Five present, two absent.
Approval of October 20, 2025, meeting minutes. Do I have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Second.
Discussion. Birthday girl?
None.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Petitions and comments of citizens. Looks like I have one here. Reminder, three-minute max. This is not Q and A unless the council or so would choose to be. Please be respectful and share your comments, concerns, or praise. Jody Slaybaugh, please come forward. Actually, may have a question, so if I may ask that as well. Mr. Slaybaugh, come forward. You as well. And state your name and address for the...
Jody Slaybaugh, 222 West 9th Street. I'm here today because of this flyer that came out in the utility bill, this last one that we got. I know you guys know about the sidewalk issue, and it's kind of something that's important to me. I wanted to clarify a little public misunderstanding here. I think it's a great idea that people take care of their property, they take care of their sidewalks, they keep them clean, they keep their yards picked up. It makes LaPorte look a lot better. My issue is with the language here, it says, "This includes both repairs and overall cleanliness." You're well aware that there's a 2009 federal court order that says the homeowners are not responsible to repair sidewalks in the city of LaPorte. The judge not only, I know there was a defense of this ordinance, but the judge not only disagreed with it, but he cited 120 years of legal precedents in the state of Indiana, that the sidewalks are public utility and under the full responsibility of the city of LaPorte. Besides that, there's a stipulation, besides the who's responsible for it, there's a stipulation order that the city of LaPorte entered into because we had tax problems back then, and the city was, didn't have enough money to fix the sidewalks. But anyways, I want to get back to the stipulation order. There was a $50,000 to $100,000 that's supposed to be set aside for emergency repairs for people with mobility issues, handicapped people in the city of LaPorte. And I know it's been said that the city only has to be put away $50,000 to have sidewalks repaired, but that's not true. That $50,000 was supposed to be set up for emergency repairs, so people who have handicaps didn't have to wait in the line of all the other repairs for sidewalks. And so I just wanted to make that clarification, that homeowners aren't responsible for sidewalk repairs. That's been argued in court, and the court has made a decision on that. And I think that the council should put out a statement correcting what's on this flyer. I think it's not right to tell people that they're responsible and that the maintenance people or the code enforcement is going to come around and write them tickets or whatever if their sidewalks aren't repaired or they're not cleaned up. So, and that's the only reason I came here tonight. And I would just like the council to clarify that. And I wanted to make it a public statement.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And so, I'll save my question for another day. But, and again, when, just for the council to Mr. Slaybaugh's point, when a resident calls code enforcement, it is their job to follow through. So when grass is coming up through the sidewalk, or there's issues there, people parking on sidewalks, we have to address that. That just happened last week. So when there are issues, our residents call, and they have to address it.
Simple.
I think that is the, anything online? Standing committee reports. Councilwoman Ficus.
Traffic Commission meets tomorrow, 5:00 PM at the police station, and then Park Board will have their next meeting Wednesday, November 19th, 4:00 PM at the park office.
Councilman Galloway.
A week from Tuesdays, the Veterans Program at the Civic, and you're supposed to open up and tell everybody hi and welcome.
But I've told you, we don't want politicians or elected officials, we only want veterans there.
Are you a politician?
I am.
Okay, just welcome people and get the heck off the stage.
That's what, we only want on the stage, we want our veterans. That's who deserves it. Thank you, Roger. Councilwoman West.
Nothing to report tonight.
Oh, and by the way, Councilwoman West, you were in Washington, DC, meeting with Congress about, if you don't mind sharing, because I think the public would like to hear that.
Absolutely. I was in Washington, meeting with members of Congress last week. The Hartz Act was passed last year, but there was no funding attached to it. So, we went back to ask for $50 million in funding, and of course, you know what the government looks like right now. So, we're hoping at least they'll think through that, because we need the money to make sure our kids are safe in our schools with having the proper amount of AEDs. Also, the response plan in place if someone goes into, when someone goes into sudden cardiac arrest, and also some research money involved, why children have cardiomyopathy at such a young age. So there's, you know, quite a bit involved, but they passed it last year, and now we just need the funding for it.
Councilman Buchanan.
Nothing to report this evening.
Councilwoman Kineszny, happy birthday.
Happy girl. Thank you. I know that the Airport Authority was properly recognized last meeting. Unfortunately, I was not able to attend. So I would be remiss if I did not congratulate them publicly on the record for winning Airport of the Year. It's a phenomenal board and staff that's at the airport. It helps keep LaPorte moving and shaking and giving opportunities for outside possibilities and ventures to come in, in more than one mode of transportation. So, my heartfelt congratulations to the Airport Authority. And their next meeting will be next Wednesday, November 12th, at 5:15 at the airport.
Thank you. So, some great news, Mr. Schreiber, if you don't mind coming forward, introducing our next donation. And it takes all of us working together, and I just want to thank everybody regarding the LaPorte County Convention and Visitors Bureau.
Sure.
As well as you'd like to, we have a donation coming, so if you don't mind introducing Jack Arnett, the man, the myth, the legend.
Absolutely. Jack Arnett is a great community partner for us. We partner with him on so many things through the park, and they have a great recognition tonight of the importance of our lakes. And we have representation here from the Lakes Association as well. So, Jack Arnett from the CBB, would you like to step forward and let us know what the donation will be tonight?
You want to stick right up here with us?
I sure will.
Maybe we might have a picture or something coming, you don't want to miss that.
Absolutely.
Jack, welcome.
Mayor, Courtney, Nick, Jack Arnett, Port County, 1322 South, 300 East LaPorte, and I'm representing the Convention and Visitors Bureau. Council members, it's great to be here tonight. This is going to be a fun presentation. We just want to say a few words about the Lake Association. I think this really needs to be about them, not us. We're really happy to be partnering with them and be able to help them out in their efforts to make our place more welcoming to our residents and our residents. And what we're talking about tonight is cleaning up that nasty mill foil that causes us all kinds of problems in our lakes. And they've been doing a great job, but as you all know, it takes money to make that happen. So we were in a place where we could partner with them, we wanted to announce it tonight, and I think it's best if Jeff and the group from the Lake Association really take the stage and the center stage. So Jeff, would you like to come up and say a few words, please?
Jeff Matusik, welcome. And again, Jeff serves on our Sustainability Commission as well, so I appreciate all the community effort that you put into LaPorte.
My, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Jack. Mark? The Lake Association, as many don't know, has been around since 1965. Just gonna, so it's been here for a long time, even though many don't know that it's, that we're here. The importance of what we do treating for the mill foil is important to economic, to residential, to businesses, to everybody involved in the city. The lake brings a lot of money into everybody, to the businesses, it helps property values, helps taxes. So that's why we really care and we work so hard to treat the lakes. And if we stop treating those lakes, in about three years, there'll be no boats on the lake because you'll be unusable. So this has to be done forever. You can't just kill it off, so we have to continue to keep doing this. And thankful for the donations, memberships, and household memberships, business memberships are how we pay for this. And that's the only way we can take care of it. Next year, we're looking at a big cost of anywhere from $50,000 to $80,000, which could be more, to treat the lake in the spring. So this is going to be, it's super helpful for us. We work hard, we're always open, any of us from the board, for any questions, to help, to come speak, to talk about the process. If I want to do it now, we'd be here till midnight, if people want to go do things. So that's about it. So, to keep it simple. And we appreciate everybody.
Jeff, you have a few members, if you'd like to call them up, and we want to make sure Jack presents.
Sure.
The big check, the little check, but I would like to get you center stage.
Yeah, let them know how much it is. Is that, someone doing the presentation now, is that, is that what?
Well, we can, we have Vince Noffel, Corey Huber, and Scott Bowardell are all the board members for us. We're missing one, he couldn't make it tonight. But like I said, as a group, we work pretty hard to try to do what we can do, and everyone takes their, helps out, whatever we can do. This year, we've done some small fundraisers, making $2,500, doing hot dog sales, to doing, you know, getting the word out there and educating people of what we do, so.
Well, we appreciate all the effort that you've done. And Jack, would you like to say how much before we take the photo?
Oh, sure. That's the fun part of this deal. So, we were able to extract some dollars that visitors leave in our community and put that right back into our community. And so tonight, we're going to be able to give a real check to Jeff, and then we'll take a picture with the, with the big check for $25,000. And that'll go a long way. I'd just like to thank our board for putting us in a position so we're able to do that, good steward of our dollars, and we had those monies available to do this, and it's a great thing. And we hope others in the community will see what's happening here and jump on and help us with this project. They do a great job. So, do the picture if you want.
We're fortunate to see, in the city of LaPorte, government works.
Yeah. Just real quickly, if anybody ever wants to look up any information, we do have a website, laportalecacciation.com, or you can go on our Facebook page also.
We say yes.
What do you want us, Courtney?
Right in the middle.
Get Mark in the picture.
Mark here.
Yeah, Mark.
Right next to you.
Sound like more when it's in your big number.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Oh, I got it.
We'll talk.
You guys need to be up in front.
Yes.
You're red.
Thank you all. Jack.
Thank you, Father.
Get out of here. Jack, if you don't mind, while you're here, Mr. Otis reminded us today already, in the NBA, if you want to share statistically...
PJ Edgecombe, who played here two years ago at the LaPorte Invitational, the leading rookie scorer this year, over 20 points a game in the NBA, played at the LaPorte Invitational.
So Jack, you want to get people out, buy your tickets, the best bang for the buck, basketball-wise?
I believe tickets are already up and on sale, and we want to check the website. The games have been moved to January 9th, 10th, and 11th. It's going to be a Friday, Saturday, and a Sunday. Little different format, but it's going to be exciting. Going to have some of the best basketball across the country going to be here. We're excited about it. I hope we have a couple more NBA first-rounders here. Nordeem's got two out of Lulamire, got two or three kids going from there. It's going to be a good night.
Cooper Flag, all these names appeared at the Civic, so don't want to miss it. Get out and enjoy inexpensively a weekend at the Civic.
Nice family event.
Yes. Thank you, Jack.
Thank you.
Second and final reading of an ordinance. Councilman Buchanan.
I make a motion to read an ordinance for the second time by title only.
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Second and final reading, Councilwoman West.
Your Honor, I move to read an ordinance for the second time by title only.
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Councilwoman West.
An ordinance to amend ordinance number 26-2024, an ordinance fixing salaries of appointed officers and employees of the city of LaPorte, Indiana for the year 2025, Department of Transportation.
Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. And this is an opportunity, we have a young lady that is able to drive and dispatch, and we know with the limited funds from the federal government and with everything happening, we have to keep those quality individuals. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Introduction of an ordinance that will be tabled. Do I have a motion to table?
I would like to make a motion to table.
Motion and a second. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Councilwoman Ficus, would you like to state?
We just, we just need a little bit more information from the adjacent homeowners before we actually bring this before council.
Motion is tabled. Councilwoman Kineszny, introduction of an ordinance.
Your Honor, I'd like to introduce an ordinance read in its entirety for the first time.
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Councilwoman West.
An ordinance establishing stop signs at the intersection of Kingsport and F, at the intersection of Panther Court and Rockwood, and at the intersection of Panther Court and Marquette. Whereas, the Traffic Commission, after due consideration, has recommended to the Common Council of the city of LaPorte that yield signs at the intersections of Kingsport and F Street, at the intersection of Panther Court and Rockwood, and at the intersection of Panther Court and Marquette should become stop signs. Now, therefore, be it, and it is hereby ordained by the Common Council of the city of LaPorte, Indiana, that Section 1, the yield signs at the intersection of Kingsport and F Street, at the intersection of Panther Court and Rockwood, and at the intersection of Panther Court and Marquette should be replaced with stop signs. Section 2, this ordinance shall be in full force and effect upon its passage, approval by the mayor, and publication as required by law. End of ordinance.
Councilwoman Ficus.
This is just cleaning up the yield signs that are in LaPorte that should be replaced with stop signs. We found more.
Other comments? Hearing none, this will now move to the Monday, November 17th, meeting. Introduction of a resolution for an additional appropriation, Councilman Buchanan.
I'd like to make a motion to read a resolution in its entirety for the first time.
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Councilwoman Kineszny.
An ordinance establishing stop signs at the intersection of Kingsport and F, at the intersection of Panther Court and Rockwood, and at the intersection of Panther Court and Marquette should become stop signs. Now, therefore, be it, and it is hereby ordained by the Common Council of the city of LaPorte, Indiana, that Section 1, the yield signs at the intersection of Kingsport and F Street, at the intersection of Panther Court and Rockwood, and at the intersection of Panther Court and Marquette should be replaced with stop signs. Section 2, this ordinance shall be in full force and effect upon its passage, approval by the mayor, and publication as required by law. End of ordinance.
Councilwoman Ficus.
This is just cleaning up the yield signs that are in LaPorte that should be replaced with stop signs. We found more.
Other comments? Hearing none, this will now move to the Monday, November 17th, meeting. Introduction of a resolution for an additional appropriation, Councilman Buchanan.
I'd like to make a motion to read a resolution in its entirety for the first time.
Motion and a second. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Councilman Buchanan.
Additional appropriation for MVH restricted fund, CCD fund, Randy Day fund, and park non-reverting fund. Whereas, it has been determined that it is now necessary to appropriate more money than what was appropriated in the annual budget. Now, therefore, Section 1, be it resolved by the Common Council of the city of LaPorte, LaPorte County, Indiana, that for the expenses of the taxing unit, the following additional sums of money are hereby appropriated out of the fund named and for the purposes specified, subject to the laws governing the same. MVH restricted fund, 2203-524-451, crack sealer materials, amount requested $88,000, amount approved $88,000. CCD fund, 4402-704-391.002, camera system, fire department, amount requested $11,957.37, amount approved $11,957.37. Rainy Day Fund, 2236-069-520, transfer, amount requested $100,000, amount approved $100,000. Park Non-Reverting Fund, 2211-803-391, other services, amount requested $10,000, amount approved $10,000. End of resolution.
So this is a resolution and can pass this evening. As you go through here, the crack seal material, the street department has been focused on crack sealing, you know, keeping good roads good while other roads continue to improve. I would like to say that our prayers and thoughts go out to Jim Sims from our street department. And we had a vendor that was loading the material, injured Jim, so our prayers are with him. He is recovering well, and he's a strong man. And we're glad that he is making a quick return as plow season is around the corner. And then others you see are transfers, whether it's the Civic, and then a purchase through CCD, which was through the fire department. Again, remember, Beechwood Golf Course, the Civic Auditorium, we've stopped providing for five years of this administration, property tax dollars, and have told them, you got to live within your means, you have to generate your own revenue. We continue to see the property tax dollars be reduced, and we'll continue to live within our means. So, any comments? I would like, oh, go ahead. Before we do that, I would like to open up to a public hearing. Do we have information on the...
Yes, this was published in the Herald Dispatch on October 22nd, 2025.
So now, we would like to open this up to a public hearing. Is there anybody from the public that would like to come forward and speak on any of these items? Anybody from the public would like to speak? Hearing on and on, now, 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 public hearing, do I have a motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Introduction of a resolution to transfer funds, Councilwoman Galloway.
I'd like to read a resolution.
Motion and a second. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, Council, or I mean, Councilman Galloway.
Resolution to transfer funds within the 2025 budgets. Whereas, there are additional monies needed in certain line items in the 2025 budgets in order to pay for essential services and obligations. Now, therefore, be it, and it is hereby resolved by the Common Council of the city of LaPorte, Indiana, that the following transfers being made within the following budgets for the year 2025. General, City Hall, 110-1101-164, from 361 repairs, maintenance to 315 professional services, $3,500. From 361 repairs, maintenance to 351 utilities, $355. Communications, 1101-311, from 331 printing, advertising to 315 professional services, $218.75. Park and Recreation, Park 2204-803, from 361 repairs, maintenance to 315 professional services, $1,500. Park Non-Reverting, 2211-803, from 391 other services to 391.002, lake fest expenses, $342.85. Rainy Day Fund, 2236-069, from 520 transfers to 5504-920 Civic, non-reverting transfer, $100,000. ACOA Non-Reverting Senior Center, 5502-803, from 451 equipment to 241 other supplies, $1,000. That's the end of it.
Thank you. And you'll notice some duplications as the process of moving funds. It takes some processes, to say the least, by state code.
Yep.
So with that, again, this is a resolution. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Other business?
Your Honor, I move to take the resolution concerning the transfer of real estate to the city of LaPorte Redevelopment Commission off the table.
Second.
Motion and a second to take it off the table. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes to take it off the table. Do I have a motion?
Your Honor, I move to introduce a resolution read for the first and only time in its entirety.
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Councilwoman Ficus.
Resolution concerning the transfer of real estate to the city of LaPorte Redevelopment Commission. Whereas, Indiana Code, Section 36-1-11-8, authorizes the transfer or exchange of real estate between governmental entities upon terms and conditions, as may be agreed upon by the entities and as evidenced by the adoption of a substantially identical resolution by each entity. And whereas, the city of LaPorte owns certain real estate as described on Exhibit A, which are desirable for the city for growth and development. And whereas, the city also owns certain real estate identified as parcel numbers, 46-06-26-380-001.000-043, and 46-06-26-328-... and 46-06-26-328-013.000-043, as described on Exhibit B, which are also desirable for the city, to the city for growth and development. And whereas, the City of LaPorte Redevelopment Commission is established pursuant to Indiana Code, Section 36-7-14, for purposes of economic development and redevelopment of the city, and whereas, the city and commission are both governmental entities authorized to own, acquire, transfer, and lease real estate, and whereas, in order to further the economic development and redevelopment purposes of the city and commission, the city desires to transfer the real estate to the commission, and the commission desires to accept the real estate from the city in order to permit the commission to utilize or transfer the real estate consistent with its authority under Indiana law. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Common Council of the City of LaPorte, Indiana, as follows. One, the city agrees to convey the real estate described on Exhibits A and B to the commission without cost, which real estate may be owned, maintained, or transferred by the commission under such terms and conditions and pursuant to such procedures as are authorized by Indiana Code, Section 36-7-14, and other applicable laws governing the commission. Two, the mayor and clerk are hereby authorized to execute a deed and other conveyance documents or materials as may be necessary and appropriate for the transfer of the real estate to the commission, and may approve any and all documents necessary or appropriate to effectuate the transfer of the real estate to the commission. This resolution is effective immediately upon its passage. End of resolution.
Mr. Otis.
Thank you, so this is in two different parts of the city. The first one is Beechwood Lakes, which is made up of three separate parcels, which would be transferring these from the city to the LaPorte Redevelopment Commission. The second is adjacent to Truesdale Ave, and there's already an adjacent parcel that is in the LaPorte Redevelopment Commission's name, simply transferring that to further development in both of those areas. This is, if you recall, did this Newport Landing and some of the other development projects within the city.
This is a resolution and can pass this evening.
Motion to approve.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Other business, a reminder, Veterans Day, Mr. Galloway, what time tomorrow, or I mean, next week for veterans to, there's breakfast in the morning?
Yeah, 9:30, I think that starts, and 10:30 is the program.
10:30 is the program.
10:30 is the program, and then veterans, family lunch after?
Yeah, at the VFW. If you're not a veteran or veteran spouse, you just pay for the spaghetti lunch, otherwise it's free, well, we're paying for it, but.
At the VFW.
Right.
And it's open to the public.
Yes.
Great. Please get out and support your veterans and students, any students need signatures, please come up after, we got you, you came to the right meeting, and do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, we're adjourned, have a great day.